Commissioner Ray?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to add three items to the agenda. Under New Business, Item 10, Consider Amendment to Spalding County Parks and Recreation Resolution, Establishing Parks, Excuse me, Rules, Regulations by Adding Appendix 5 Concussion Policy. With this year's passage of House Bill 48 for the Georgia Legislature, new requirements were implemented to educate young athletes and their parents on the danger of concussions within youth athletic activities. All associations will be required to sign documentation that shows they have read and understood the dangers of concussions. This amendment and adding this to the night will allow us to update the resolution that establishes the rules and regulations for Parks and Rec. Item 11, under New Business, Consider Transfer Approved Surplus Vehicle to Program Challenge Program, which is of the Georgia National Guard at Fort Stewart-Washington. We have been requested since the September 16th extraordinary session that we approve the declaration of one of the 15 surplus vehicles to the Youth Challenge Program. Item 12, Consider Changing the Unpaid Holiday Originally Approved from 1/1/2014, New Year's Day to May 26 Memorial Day. Due to our June 17 extraordinary session, the Board established New Year's Day, January 1, 2014, and Good Friday, April 18 as unpaid holidays for our employees for fiscal year 14. Based on the new payment policy that we're headed, that we're going to start effective the 1st of July, 1st of January, it has been asked that we change the first date, or the January 1 date to May 27 to help alleviate some confusion and issues with our employees regarding this change.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a motion by Commissioner Ray and a second by Commissioner Johnson to amend the agenda with the before read items. Item under New Business, it will be in Item 10, to consider adding an appendix to the rules and regulations of Park and Rec related to the concussion policy. Item 11, under New Business, Consider Transfer of Approved Surplus Vehicle to the Program Challenge Program in Fort Stewart, Georgia. And Item Number 12, Consider Changing Unpaid Holidays Originally Approved for January 1, 2014 to May 26, 2013. Is there any discussion? All those in favor show of hands, four, zero.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have presentations and proclaimations. Are there any, William?
No, ma'am.
Okay, presentation of a financial statement?
Not officially.
At this time, we'll have citizen comments. I have two residents who have signed up to speak. Speakers must sign up prior to the meeting and provide their names, addresses, and the topic on which they will speak. Speakers must direct all comments to the board only. Speakers will be allotted three minutes to speak on their chosen topic, and it should relate to matters pertinent to the jurisdiction of this Board of Commissioners. No questions will be asked by any Commissioners during citizen comments. Outburst from the audience will not be tolerated, and common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. At this time, I would like to ask Jean Hannan to please come to the podium and give us your name and address.
I'm Jean Hannan, and I reside at 314 Horseshoe Bend Circle, Griffin, Griffin. I've been a resident around 40 years, actually this year, and I just was concerned, I just wanted to just voice my concerns about the new airport that's being proposed in this eastern portion of the county, and how that's going to affect traffic. I have been told that there was a widening project for MacDonah Road along that trail there, and I was just trying to get some clear answers, you know, clear plans and just ask what exactly are the zoning laws and stuff.
Ms. Hannan, if you will get with our county manager and give him some contact information through you, phone number or email, he will get with you personally and give you all the details and answers to the questions that you have.
Well, I appreciate it.
No problem, ma'am. We thank you for coming. Would you get some heat? I don't know. Ms. Rose Porcel?
I'm Rose Postel of Griffin, Georgia, 304 Horseshoe Bend Circle. I've been here since 73, and my main concern is the airport and finding out more about it, and how far it's going to be, how close it's going to become to my house, especially with the noise. And we got an airport that's sitting over there, never, never see planes going in, and why are we having to build a new one?
Yes, ma'am. We have your information unless you want to give us an email address?
I can't give myself one.
Okay, and then, when you're finished, I'll give you that. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming, and we'll get that information for you guys as soon as possible, probably tomorrow. At this time, we have no one else signed up to speak, so we will go directly to the agenda. Approval of the Minutes, Consider Approval of the Minutes of the following meetings, September 16, 2013, the extraordinary session, September 23, 2013, the public hearing number one, September 23, 2013, the public hearing number two, September 26, 2013, special calls meeting, September 26, 2013, the zoning public hearing, October 1, 2013, the public hearing, October 1, 2013, the special call meeting for the adoption of, the adoption of the tax law.
Madam Chair, move the minutes as identified the approved.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Ray and a second by Commissioner Johnson to approve the minutes of the previously read meetings. Is there any discussion? Here being none, all those in favor show of hands, four, zero. Consent Agenda, Item Number One, Consider Approval on a Second Reading of the Ordinance Number 2013-13, which amends the Spalding County Code of Ordinances Part 6, Licensing and Regulations, Chapter 1, Businesses and Occupations by Deleting Article A, the sale of malt beverages and wine, Article B, retail liquor, package store, and Article C, sales alcoholic beverages for consumption on premises in their entirety, and by adding a new Article A for the sale of alcoholic beverages.
Madam Chair, move to approve Consent Item Number One as identified.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Are y'all going to do these all together?
Yeah, I was going to ask during discussion.
The consent agenda is generally done all seven at one time.
Is there any questions or concerns about any items that are on the consent agenda? So, Commissioner Ray, if you will just read.
I will, oh, but you want to draw my, uh, motion for the consent agenda, item one, and make that for consent agenda, item one through six, seven. Would you like me to read through those now?
Wouldn't be safe, would it?
Seven, there's one more on the back. Consent Agenda consists of the, Consider Approval of Second Reading Ordinance 2013-13, amending the Spalding County Code of Ordinances Part 6, Licensing and Regulation, Chapter 1, Businesses and Occupations by Deleting Article A, Sale of Malt Beverages and Wine, Article B, Retail Liquor Package Stores, and Article C, Sale of Alcoholic Beverages for Consumption on Premises in Their Entirety, and adding a new Article A, Sale of Alcoholic Beverages. Item Two, Consider Approval on Second Reading Ordinance 2013-12, to amend the Spalding County Code of Ordinances Part 6, Licensing and Regulation, Chapter 1, Businesses and Occupations, Article D, General Businesses and Occupational Tax by Deleting in Its Entirety Section 6-1104, Penalty of Ordinance Violation, and adding a new Section 6-1104 entitled Penalty of Ordinance Violation. Consent Agenda, Item Number Three, Consider Approval on Second Reading Ordinance 2013-11, amending the Spalding County Code of Ordinances Part 6, Licensing and Regulations, Chapter 1, Businesses and Occupations, Article G, Excise Tax on Hotels to Include, to Add, Section 6-1176, entitled Enforcement. Item Four, the consent agenda, Consider Approval on Second Reading Ordinance 2013-10, to amend the Spalding County Code of Ordinances Part 6, Licensing and Regulations, Chapter 2, Street and Sidewalk Abuse and Regulations, Section 6-2004, Route, Route of Travel Through Trucks. Item E, to provide for no through trucks on Woodward Road from Georgia's Highway 16 to Rover's Tele Road. Item Number Five, Consider Approval on Second Reading Amendment to UDO 8-13-03, Article 15, C2 Manufacturing, Section 1503A34, Delete Commercial Livestock Processing as Principal Use, Section 1503B9, Add Commercial Livestock Processing as Special Exception Use. Item Number Six, Consider Approval on Second Reading Amendment to UDO 8-1304, Article 15, C2 Manufacturing, Section 1503A42, Delete Poultry Processing Plant as Principal Use, Section 1303B10, and Add Poultry Processing Plant as Special Exception Use. Item Number Seven, on the consent agenda, Consider Approval of Second Reading Amendment to UDO 8-1306, Appendix A Subdivision Ordinance, Article 5, Require Development Standards, Article 501, Add Provisions Requiring a Lot and Foundation Survey Prior to the Issuance of a Building Permit. Madam Chair, as identified, I move the consent agenda to be approved.
I second.
Here's a motion by Commissioner Ray and a second by Commissioner Miller to approve the seven items of the consent agenda as read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor show of hands, four, zero. Old Business, Item One, Consider Adoption of Lighting Policy as Recommended by Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission.
The Commissioners had asked that a few changes be made. This came back before the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board that made the changes the Board requested. It pretty much said that the lighting policy would apply to everything from practices to games to tournaments, as requested, and make all of the agencies and...
Associations.
Associations aware of this new policy.
That goes to the Board.
I make a motion to reconsider adoption of lighting policy as recommended by Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Johnson and a second by Commissioner Miller to approve the adoption of the lighting policies recommended by Parks and Rec, the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission. Is there any discussion? All those in favor show of hands, four, zero. New Business, Item One, Consider Approval of the Financial Policies and Procedures Amendment.
Yes, ma'am. At the retreat, at several retreats and several meetings, we made several changes, and this is the final draft with all the changes incorporated from all of those meetings.
I'd like to table this, William. I have to bring that into paper. I'm not sure I can, I need to go back over this thing and read it.
Good.
I make a motion to table.
Consider Approval of Financial Policies, please, your main.
Second. A point.
Have a motion to state that.
Have a motion by Commissioner Miller and a second by Commissioner Johnson to table. All those in favor show of hands.
I like discussion.
There's no discussion.
No discussion.
No discussion, yeah, that's right.
Sorry.
My forgiveness.
But as a point of order, I can't allow you to make your comments. I mean, show of hands. Three, those opposed.
My opposition to the vote is that we can always go back and update and change anything we need to change versus leaving an ordinance not, not putting guidance out there for our staff. That's the only reason I voted against it. When we make the adjustments as required or as needed, I will vote for it.
Three.
Three.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Consider, Item Two, Consider Request from the Golden Age Club to Utilize Big Blue for a Trip to Nashville, Tennessee on December 2 and 3, 2013.
Yes, ma'am. All out-of-state trips require Board of Commissioners' approval. You see in your agenda sheet there the revenues and expenditures for this, and we recommend approval.
Do I move the request from the Golden Age Club to utilize Big Blue for a trip to Nashville, Tennessee on December 2 and 3, 2013, be approved?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Ray and a second by Commissioner Miller to approve the request of the Golden Age Club to utilize Big Blue for a trip to Nashville, Tennessee on December 2 and 3, 2013. Is there any discussion? Madam Chair.
Commissioner Miller, you mentioned earlier that you had heard that...
Yes, senior told me, said it was good to go out of state anymore.
Who told you that?
A senior.
No, sir. It, it went out a couple weeks ago. That, that is incorrect. Big Blue is available. The only thing is, out-of-state trips require Board of Commissioner approval. All in-state trips and things of that nature, the county manager approves, but all out-of-state are approved by the Board.
But there's certain matters they can go out of state too, really.
Uh, we can, it is limited to somewhere around, I think it's out to Biloxi, a little bit further than that is the limit at the current time.
Okay. I'll tell them that they were wrong.
Okay.
We didn't see it.
Well, just tell them to call. I'd love to know where they heard that so we can get that...
They heard the senior did.
Misinformation corrected.
Any other discussion? All those in favor show of hands, four, zero. Next item on the agenda is Item Three, Consider Ratification of the Parks and Rec fee schedule for FY 2014.
Essentially, these are the fees that were built into the FY 2014 budget. They have been approved by the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and this is formal ratification by this point.
Madam Chair, move to approve the ratification of the Parks and Rec fee schedule for 2014.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Ray and a second by Commissioner Miller to approve the Parks and Rec fee change that will be effective July of 2014 or January?
Actually, July 1, 2013.
July 1, 2013.
For fiscal year 2014. Yes, sir.
Okay, fiscal year 2014. Is there any discussion?
So that means it starts January 1st?
No, sir. It started July 1.
It started July, these rates are already in place.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All those in favor show of hands, four, zero. Next item on the agenda is Item Number, is Item Number Four, Consider Approval of a Contract for Inmate Medical Services for the Spalding County Correctional Institute with Dr. Mark Crump.
Dr. Crump has been the county physician and provided medical services for the correctional institution for probably the past 14 or 15 years. In Dr. Crump's current policy, it states that he will be paid semi-monthly. This contract just changes that payment from semi-monthly to bi-weekly effective January 1, so that his contract is in line with how we will be paying other county employees effective January 1. No change in fees, no change in amount. It just changes the language on how he will, when he will be paid.
I have a question, William. How, how long, unless anybody else has a question, I'll probably go after you. How long has Dr. Crump had his contract with the county for providing services for that?
Since Dr. [inaudible]. Vern, the gentleman died that was serving. He had been a county doctor out there for 37 years, and Dr. Crump came to us at that time and essentially helped us out because this gentleman died. Dr. Williams, I'm sorry, Dr. Williams. It was in the early 90s, I believe.
Okay, so has his contract remained the same? I guess what I'm trying to get at is, has he ever had an increase in his, his contract rate?
His contract says that he will get the same cost of living increase that county employees get, so in the past five years, he's gotten only 2%.
Um, does he...
The question I had was kind of on the lines of what William was referring to, so it's not negotiable pay, and this is just, he's the doctor, it's just renewed every year?
Um, the contract automatically renews unless anyone has a problem with it, and it also says that he gets, for a long time, I think for the first 10 or so years, it did not have that increase in that county employees got, so he got nothing, but when it was redone in maybe 2006 or 2008, that cost of living was put in at that time, so that any county employee, if he gets the same cost of living that county employees get, if we get one.
Any other questions? Okay, there being none, if you're going to have a motion, will you?
Madam Chair, move to approve the contract for inmate medical care for Spalding County Correctional Institute with Dr. Mark Crump as identified.
I second. Have a motion by Commissioner Ray and a second by Commissioner Miller to approve the contract with Dr. Mark Crump with all the aforementioned data except for the change that changes his pay to bi-weekly. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor show of hands, four, zero. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Consider Approval of Annual Contracts for Programs and Services under the FY 2014 Community Service Block Grant, the CSFG. William?
Yes, ma'am. This amount was included in the FY 2014 budget. It operates on the federal fiscal year, and the amount is the same as the last two fiscal years, $119,190. Council on Aging Salvation Army and Three Rivers, Three Rivers Regional Commission.
I'll make a motion just for, of approving, just for the sake of discussion.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Flowers and a second by Commissioner Ray to consider approval of annual contracts for programs and services under the FY 2014 Community Services Block Grant. Is there any discussion? William? Just how is, how would the government shutdown affect, is that going to affect the money that they're supposed to get to operate these programs? I know she gets it in increments.
She gets it in increments, and right now, I know that she has had to get volunteers for drivers. I heard that at a United Way meeting last week. I'm not sure how any addition, right now, I think there's enough money for food, but the drivers were where she was getting the federal money for, and that has stopped, so she is having to utilize volunteers and is in need of volunteers to deliver these home meals. I would think, we don't have something pretty quick, those other programs will be affected as well, but right now, it's just the Meals on Wheels program that's adversely affected at this time. That's all I've been made aware.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor show of hands, four, zero. Item Six, Consider Approval of an Agency Contract with the City of Orchard Hill for Fire Protection Services for the period October 1, 2013 through September 30, 2014.
Agenda Items Six or Seven are the annual fire protection contracts with Sunnyside and Orchard Hill, and they're based on their digest values as calculated for the FY, excuse me, for the 2013 digest year. The contract letters and amounts have gone out, and correspondingly, Orchard Hill and Sunnyside have made adjustments to their millage rates in order to cover the cost of those contracts.
I entertain a motion to approve the agency contract with the City of Orchard Hill for Fire Protection Services over the period of October 1, 2013 to September 30, 2014.
Subwooze.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Ray and a second by Commissioner Johnson to approve the agency contract with the City of Orchard Hill for Fire Protection Services for the period of October 1, 2013 to September 30, 2014. Is there any discussion?
Now, like, why, why do they have to pay for the fire service? They do this for, and they pay taxes in Spalding County.
They live in incorporated municipalities, and our fire district only taxes those residents in unincorporated Spalding County, so they don't pay a fire tax to Spalding County in Sunnyside and Orchard Hill or Griffin.
Okay.
Oh, well.
No.
Any other questions? All those in favor show of hands, four, zero. Item Seven, Consider Approval of an Agency Contract with the City of Sunnyside for Fire Protection for the period October 1, 2013 to September 30, 2014.
Same with this, Sunnyside contract, and actually, Sunnyside met last week and have already approved their contract pending approval of the Board tonight.
Make a motion to reconsider approval of an agency contract with the City of Sunnyside for Fire Protection Services for the period of October 1, 2013 through September 30, 2014.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Johnson and a second by Commissioner Miller to approve the agency contract with the City of Sunnyside, Sunnyside for Fire Protection Services for the period of October 1, 2013 through September 30, 2014. Is there any discussion? All those in favor show of hands, four, zero. Number Eight, Item Eight, Consider Appointment to the Council on Aging to Field the Expire Term of Joanne Cobb and Clara Kelly pursuant to bylaws. Only one appointment is necessary for a term to expire October 7, 2016.
After some diligent research between Ricky and Ruth, Ms. Ruth Daniel and Bonnie Frogner, it was determined that there was an error in 2010, and the name of this group got changed, and therefore it somehow got incorporated with other appointments at that time, and no appointments were made. There is one name in the book, Janie Clark, 535 Pine Ridge. She is volunteer coordinator for Brightmore Nursery on Highway 16, and she is recommended by Ruth Daniels and the other board members on that board, but that is a term to expire October 7, 2016, so we'll get it in the appointment book right, so we'll be able to keep up with it. It used to be called McIntosh, well, it's still called McIntosh Trail Council on Aging, but with the changing of McIntosh Trail to Three Rivers, ours Regional Commission, it all got confused in 2010, and was kind of dropped.
I have a question, because I don't really know what their bylaws are. Could a person that was an employee with the Council of Aging be on their board?
Could a person that was an employee with the council of aging be on their board?
We don't have their bylaws on the website.
Okay.
Ricky's looking it up. I think it is emails that he received from Ms. Ruth.
Well, I mean, you can just let me know later. I don't, I don't have a problem. Just someone that talked to me about that.
The bylaws are in the elements of agenda.
Well, we only have one in the book, so, um, will the board?
I'd like to move that Janie Clark be appointed to the council of aging to fill the expired term of Joanne Cobb and Clara Kelly. Pursuant to the bylaws, only one appointment is necessary for the term to expire October seventh, two thousand sixteen.
I'll say it again. Have a motion by Commissioner Ray and a second by Commissioner Johnson to approve the appointment to the council on aging for Ms. Clara. No. Jo, Janie Clark? Ms. Janie Clark to fill the expired terms of Ms. Joanne Cobb and Clara Kelly with a term to expire October seventh, twenty sixteen. Is there any discussion?
I think I found a question to your, an answer to your question. Under section three, uh, the council shall have the responsibility for hiring and terminating, terminating the services of the executive director of the council. Uh, with that, any employee of the council would be over, under, but yet over the executive director, so that would pose a problem.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any other comments? All those in favor, show of hands. Four, zero. Item number nine, consider rescheduling the November twenty eighth and December twenty sixth zoning public hearings due to the observance of holidays. William?
Those actually occurred, those dates are actually, um, the day after Christmas and Thanksgiving Day. We do not know yet if there are going to be items for us to consider at this time. On the county manager's report, I also have consideration of canceling or rescheduling the November eighteenth and December sixteenth meetings. Now, um, historically, we have only held one meeting in November and December. But these are the week before Thanksgiving and the week before Christmas. So we could combine those meetings with the zoning hearings, but we need, we need to give staff a little direction because they have to advertise and things like that fifteen days beforehand and they need to tell the applicants if they do have any between now and then, when the meetings would be held. Right now, it doesn't, you know, we're not, we don't have anything for the October zoning public hearing. And right now, we don't have anything for the November, but it, they still have time to apply.
So you're, you're, uh, you were going to ask us in the manager's comments to cancel the regular meeting of the eighteenth in November?
And the sixteenth of December, if you would like. We don't. Historically, we have canceled those, but.
I, I just think we, we need to get, wait till we get closer.
I would, I would agree. I mean, we can have a call meeting, but let's look and see what we have, what, what we have.
We'll put it back on the November fourth meeting then, and that way we'll have a much better idea. Okay, now, as far as the zoning for right now, do you want to set those for the same dates as the November eighteenth and December sixteenth, if there are any applications?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll advise community development then if, uh, if we could get a motion to move November eighteenth to November sixteenth, excuse me.
November twenty.
November twenty-eighth to November eighteen.
Twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen.
Right.
Another chair move to reschedule the November twenty-eighth meeting to November the eighteenth and November the twenty, December the twenty-sixth, zoning and planning hearing, uh, leading to December the sixteenth due to the observance of holidays and as required.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Ray and a second by Commissioner Johnson to move the November twenty-eighth zoning hearing to the scheduled regular meeting night of November the eighteenth. And the regular scheduled zoning meeting for December the twenty-sixth moved to Monday the sixteenth as scheduled night for our regular extraordinary session, um, due to holidays.
And we'll start both of those at six P M. And then, well, after we finish the zoning hearing, we'll move directly into the regular meetings. That's okay.
For advertising purposes as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, show of hands. Four, three. Uh, four.
Oh, four.
Four. Item number ten on the agenda is the addition to the changes to the agenda. Item number ten is consider an amendment to the Spalding County Parks and Recreation Resolution establishing rules and regulations by adding appendix five dealing with the concussion policy.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, as Commissioner Ray stated earlier, there was a House bill passed. The Park and Rec Advisory Board, um, adopted, uh, this amendment and, uh, our record has already been distributed to our youth associations and everyone is signing off on it. We just need formal approval of the board commissioners. The reason we haven't gotten to you before now, we entered this and we have been working with the departments on novice agenda and teaching each department how to enter their own agenda items. And this one got entered, but no date was assigned to it. So it technically sat out there in limbo land until we took Ricky down and blasted it. So I do apologize. But we're learning novice agenda too. We're trying to teach, uh, part of the money-saving, cost-saving process is to let departments submit their own agenda requests with their own documentation and then it's reviewed by Ruth, the county manager, then the clerk, and then it's put into agenda form. So, again, it, um, this is just ratifying something that's already done and it will be an appendix to the resolution. The original Parks and Recreation Resolution.
So are we actually, so just to be clear, are we actually saying right now there is no concussion policy? We're adding one in? Is it real? Is that physically adjusted?
Uh, you're adding it in formally by resolution. There is a concussion policy. They're following it just as if it. Because it's already been approved by Park and Rec Advisory Board, you're just really ratifying it like you did the fees.
I'd like to approve the amendment to the Spalding County Parks and Recreation Resolution establishing rules and regulations by adding appendix five concussion policy.
Have a motion by Commissioner Ray to, um, amend the Spalding County Parks and Rec, um, Recreation Resolution establishing rules and regulations by adding appendix five to the concussion policy. Is there any discussion? I, I just wanted to say that this concussion policy really deals with football. You know, the requirement of having a special kind of helmet and padding around the neck. But Park and Rec is also looking at how this concussion policy will deal with other sports because, you know, folks bump heads and stuff in basketball and soccer and so, um, but because there is a state, a state law that is trying to regulate the potential for that kind of serious damage. So, um, it's, it's a good policy. Any other discussion? All those in favor, show of hands. Four, zero. Item number eleven, consider transfer of approved surplus vehicle to the Program Challenge Program.
Those vehicles were declared surplus and they were approved in the September sixteenth meeting. That's what that means. And Ricky's abbreviation, approved September sixteenth, two thousand thirteen. What we'd like to do is take, um, one of those vehicles and transfer it to the Department of the, is it Department of the Army?
National, Georgia National.
Georgia National Guard Program Challenge. We did this with a bus a few years back and, uh, Program Challenge was very appreciative for that and we were recommending once, one of the fifteen surplus. One of the fifteen surplus.
Any questions? William?
When, when are you going to sell these things?
They are set to be advertised next week, this week?
For October seventeenth.
And October seventeenth, they will be, uh, they'll be able to see them from noon.
From nine to one.
From nine to one and then bids will be accepted that day. And the bids will be opened at one thirty at the Sheriff's Department. And then you'll have twenty-four hours to remove it from the premises.
So fourteen left to be surplused.
Yes, sir. Most of those not running or barely running.
For some average, how much do we want to get?
Anywhere between three hundred and a thousand, depending on whether it's running, not running, whether pieces have been removed. You know, we, we buy a fleet at a time, ten or twelve at a time. And so instead of, if we have one that may be wrecked in the front and you need a quarter panel from the rear, instead of buying a new one, we'll take it off this other car, bumpers, seats, steering wheels, transmissions, tires. So sometimes they get cannibalized. But we were trying to get these before they're cannibalized too bad because they really don't, they barely bring a couple hundred bucks if they're cannibalized too bad.
Any other questions, William? Pleasure of the board.
I'd like to approve the, uh, transfer of approved surplus vehicles to the Program Challenge Program under the Georgia National Guard.
Have a motion by Commissioner Ray and a second by Commissioner Johnson to approve the transfer of a surplus vehicle to the Program Challenge Program, uh, of the National Guard. Any discussion? William, I, I just wanted to let folks know that, because I know that someone made a comment during one of our hearings about, you know, us transferring vehicles. But, you know, when these transfers happen, they, they usually happen with a governmental entity.
Government entity owned, yes, ma'am.
And also, I know of at least ten people in Spalding County who have sent children to the Program Challenge Program and people don't know what it is. It's a National Guard program that takes kids who did not finish high school and that are having problems with the police. And they take them down there and basically put them through the boot camp. And about eighty-five percent of them end up going off to college or either going into the military. So it keeps them off the street. It gives them a whole new set of discipline. And I certainly think that this is, you know, this transfer is to an organization that certainly needs all the help they can get, you know, from us in terms of, uh, what it would literally cost us in terms of getting it out.
It's a great program and if you'd like info, any additional information on it, they're going to be at the Griffin Rotary Club, I believe, in January and I'll make sure you're invited. And so you can hear some of their statistics. It's really, uh, these kids get one last chance and that's explained to them. And they've had a doctor, I think a surgeon, someone who was in a problem child, so to speak, uh, that came out to be a doctor.
Term is troubled youth, but.
Uh, I'm sorry. Troubled youth, I'm sorry.
They also, they also require GED in order to graduate or a high school equivalent diploma. Uh, and they are, uh, they're in the ninety percentile of completion rates on their GEDs and high school equivalencies. So this is a worthwhile program. It's funded mainly by the Georgia National Guard. Uh, as, you know, the chairman, chairperson.
Go ahead.
Yeah, chairwoman. Say it. Gwen.
So, yeah. So any other discussion? All those in favor, show of hands. Four, zero. Item number twelve, uh, consider changing the unpaid holiday originally approved for January first, twenty fourteen, which is New Year's Day, to May twenty-sixth, twenty thirteen Memorial Day. William, will you explain what's going on?
Yes, ma'am. There's a typo there. It should read May twenty-sixth, twenty fourteen.
Okay.
I apologize for that. Uh, earlier this year, the board voted to move to a bi-week, biweekly pay system. Currently, we're on semi-monthly and semi-monthly, uh, you get, um, twenty-four paychecks a year. Biweekly, you get twenty-six. We did that to assist us with original, uh, some additional accounting requirements and to help us get into automated time and attendance. There's been some confusion amidst county employees and some angst amidst county employees about implementation of both the first unpaid holiday and going from twenty-four pay periods to twenty-six pay periods all at one time effective January one. What this does is lets us implement without the, um, detriment to the employee of an additional eight hours without pay for that January first holiday and just moves that eight hours without pay from January first to May twenty-sixth. Uh, we still have two unpaid holidays. Uh, they'll be Memorial Day, Good Friday, if this is approved. And, um, implementation of the new paid, um, pay periods begins January first. So, um, it, it just happened that the two coincided at the same time and this will remove any, um, problems that employees have with implementation of two at the same time. What it would do would be a double reduction in employees' pay for that first pay period due to the eight hours not paid for that holiday. So, um, that's why we're recommending moving it to the Memorial Day holiday in lieu of January first. Is that?
Thank you.
This doesn't affect the budget at all, does it?
Doesn't affect the budget. We still have two as budgeted, two unpaid holidays. It just removes the designation of January one as the first one and puts that on May twenty-sixth, which, there are only four holidays between January one, twenty fourteen and June thirtieth. And, uh, it's New Year's, uh, New Year's Day, M L K, Good Friday, Memorial Day. So we moved them to the last two.
With the pleasure of the board. Make a motion to be considered changing the unpaid holiday originally approved for January first, two thousand fourteen, New Year's Day, to May twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen Memorial Day.
Sir.
Have a motion by Commissioner Johnson and a second by Commissioner Ray to approve the changing of the unpaid holiday from January first, two thousand fourteen to May twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, show of hands. Three. Those opposed?
No, I think he.
I hate my end.
He was just a little bit late.
Four, zero. Okay, this time we'll have a report of the county manager.
Yes, ma'am. It's only this six, this six, so sit back. Spalding County Water Authority meeting originally scheduled for next week has been rescheduled for October twenty-third at eight thirty. Uh, I know it's a little early, but we're in the Christmas spirit, so I want to remind everyone, Park and Rec Festival of Lights will be held on November twenty-sixth at Airport Road Park at six o'clock P M. Um, earlier this afternoon, I sent you by electronic transmission a copy of the Spalding County Park and Recreation Annual Report for the period July one, twenty twelve through June thirtieth, twenty thirteen. Got some great awards and award-winning department in there and, uh, they tell about all the great things that Park and Rec has done over the past year. Georgia Recreation and Parks Association banquet, awards banquet, was going to be held right here in Spalding County. We were successful in getting that banquet located to Spalding County this year. It's going to be at the Senior Center. It's October the twenty-third and the banquet begins at seven P M. All commissioners are invited. So we invite you to come out, uh, welcome folks from this region, um, all around the state to Spalding County and help us show off our senior center and see how many awards we take home this year. The ACCG Fourth District Meeting is going to be held October twenty-eighth at the Coweta County Cooperative Extension Office in Noonan. The meeting begins at ten thirty and ends at twelve. Uh, if you'd like to attend, I know, um, you need to get with Ricky so we can register you right now. Chairman Flowers, Taylor, Commissioners Ray and Johnson and myself are all registered to attend. to attend.
I'd like to go too.
Great, we get Ricky to sign you up, sir.
Can we cut down on expense by getting a van from Park and Recreation, all of those ride together?
Sure. Are you all can all ride with me, you can fit in my car?
We'll let you drive.
No, it's okay, we can ride together.
We'll work out the travel arrangements. Let's see. I sent out an email notice last week, the zoning hearing for October twenty-fourth, there are no items to be heard, but we requested, and a majority of you responded that you'd like to have the N-RIM hearing scheduled that night. We have approximately, I believe it's eighteen new properties, I'll have you a listing tomorrow with addresses and county commission districts, but we'd like to, we have scheduled those for six o'clock on October the twenty-fourth, there are eighteen of those. So we're moving ahead with our second round of substandard housing, moving ahead with that. Ricky, when are we going to do the press release? Tomorrow? Okay, tomorrow a press release will be issued regarding promotions at our Spalding County Fire Department. For the past year and a half, we've been working on restructuring the fire department, and approved in this year's budget was to move to have two deputy chiefs, one deputy chief of operation, one deputy chief of administration. Proud to announce that promotions for those are Mr. Jamie Clark as deputy chief of operations and Mr. Glenn Pope as deputy chief of administration. Fire Chief West and a panel reviewed all the applicants, interviewed, and Chief West and the group unanimously approved these appointments. We're very proud to be able to promote from within the department, and this is step one in a long process that we're going to be working on for taking all of our departments and working on the departments, making them more streamlined and more accountable. So again, congratulations, the press release on that will be issued in the morning. Would like permission to proceed to meet with the city of Griffin in reference to eight-hundred megahertz communications services. Commissioner Ray had previously attended those meetings, and I sent y'all an email and requested that either the chairman or another representative join us for those meetings. Madam Chairman, would you like to-
Sure.
-be a part of that? We have gone back and recalculated again at the request of the city, some estimated cost for use of our eight-hundred megahertz radio system, and we'd like to present that to the city now, so I will get in contact with Kenny Smith this week and see if we can't set up a meeting so that we can move that right along. We received a request from the Spalding County Sheriff's Office Junior Deputy Program. This year, they're going to try a fundraiser, they haven't done a fundraiser in several years. I know when I went, they sold peanuts, but that's kind of dating somebody, but I've heard that they sold fruit before, so they were trying to sell fruit again, but they need a place to store the fruit. And they came to us, and I thought of the old ceramics building down next to Park and Rec, it's been cleaned up, it's about twelve hundred square feet, they need it for a couple of days, November, excuse me, November eighteenth through the twenty-fifth for storage and distribution of the boxes of fruit. Does the board have any problem allowing the junior deputy program to utilize it? Currently, these are vacant. So we'll let them sell some fruit and see how, how much funds they raise to help offset the cost. I believe now it's about four hundred or four hundred and fifty dollars, five fifty.
When are they going to start doing that?
They're asking pretty quick, because they're asking usually between eighteenth and twenty-fifth, so I'll make sure, is the sheriff? I'll make sure at staff meeting in the morning that sheriffs, that the commissioners have given order forms for that fruit.
Yeah, I want to give you some orange and give you-
Because it's a good fundraiser. Let's see. Over the weekend, there were several fires at Long Meartis Park. These fires were intentionally set, and while we were out there responding, Mr. Hamburger called me on Sunday three times, while we were out there responding and putting out some of the fires, apparently the culprit was still setting other fires. So we had some minor damage out there, our mulch storage partially burnt that was out there. I don't know how they did it, but there was a plastic culvert under one of our trails that they actually burnt, and I don't really know how you burn that class eight-hundred PVC, but they got it started and we had to go put it out. Fire Department and other authorities are investigating, we do hope to move forward. There were some fires also reported in the past week or two at the school out there, and quote-unquote wildfire at the park, that we believe is also the same individual.
We can't just set a camera up out there?
Well, they were set on, you know, that's a couple hundred acres, so it's not just around the facilities, they were set down in the woods and some other things, but we're working with authorities to see if we can apprehend this region. I got a report from Larry Lillard in the Tax Assessor's Office, as of October third, five hundred and thirty-five appeals have been heard. The percentage loss on those total appeals is five point nine percent, so almost half of the twelve hundred appeals, so they continue to hear those and are continuing to work through those appeals. I'll send you a copy of that by email.
The, the, the tax, the tax bowls, the taxes from these appeals were that those amounts, the possible amounts of those related into our FY fourteen budget.
In the FY fourteen budget, we budgeted nine hundred thousand dollars in prior year's taxes. Every year, we budget an amount in prior year's taxes based on collections at that point, and we work with the tax commissioner for that. There are lots of taxes that are not paid during the current fiscal year, so we do budget that, but historically, the tax commissioner has been in the ninety-five to ninety-eight percent range. If you go back and look at the two thousand nine, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, I believe she's at ninety-five, ninety-seven percent in collection for those, and then we will, as time goes on, those taxes get paid. Just had one large one last week from a developer that I had emailed you about where the bank paid off the developer's taxes for nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. So we do have that occurring, and it's primarily large developers, things like that, although there are some individuals, and you must remember that when you appeal your taxes, you're sent a bill for eighty-five percent of the taxes due. It is not required that you pay those taxes in order for you to file an appeal. So some of these appeals that they're hearing, some of the folks pay, some of the folks have not, so those will be coming in as prior year taxes as well. But in the law, it does not state for you to appeal and even take it to the Board of Equalization, it still does not have to be paid. The only time it has to be paid is if you remand it to Superior Court, then the taxes have to be paid at that time, and you go to Superior Court. But all during this appeal process, you don't have to pay that eighty-five percent, and some have not. I thought that was-
There's no penalty either?
Oh, yes, sir, there's penalties and interest-
They don't pay the eighty-five percent?
If they don't pay the eighty-five percent, there are penalties and interest that still accrue, and then once adjudication is made, then a determination of penalties, interest, et cetera, based on whatever value is set by the Board of Equalization, and it goes from there. But I would have thought that the state would have made you pay them in order to appeal them, especially to the Board of Equalization, but the state law does not require that. Only if you disagree with the Board of Equalization and you file it Superior Court that you have to actually pay into the court, and you don't pay it to the tax commissioner, I believe you pay it into the court, into the clerk's registry. So we still don't get it until the court hears it and makes a ruling. So there's a long, long, complicated process to appeals that-
And once it's filed with Superior Court, it could take up to a year or more to actually be processed.
I just can't figure out why they're so far behind, though. I mean, you go back to two thousand eleven, I mean, somebody drove their feet, I don't know where it came from, but, you know, that's pitiful. I got friends that got property, got several property, he's not even going to be hurt till November, and his go back to two thousand eleven, and this thing being going on since, what, August, they've been here to feel it.
Yes, sir, but there were twelve hundred appeals, so-
Twenty-nine hundred or something, I saw two thousand something appeal.
It started out that way, but it worked its way down to just twelve hun, a little over twelve hun, when it went back to the Board of Equalization. But they're halfway through, so it's, they're making progress, they are over there every day. We have staff from Tax Assessor's Office over there, either two, sometimes three staff members over there presenting appeals.
I just know that these people that did these reevaluations, I don't know where they got their information at, but I'm telling you, they messed this whole system up. I don't know who picked them out or how they was picked out, but I guarantee you, they showed up, need to come back no more. And then we got to pay them thirty thousand dollars to sit over on mistakes that they already made?
You can have-
I'm not going to go there.
Yeah, don't make me cry.
Okay. The last thing I have, we were notified that the boiler at the courthouse, there's a large boiler at the courthouse that supplies heat. That boiler has been there since nineteen ninety-five, it has two leaking sections, you are, this is a pressurized boiler, and it cannot be repaired, will have to be replaced. The estimated cost is between seventy-five and eighty-five thousand dollars. Wanted to let you know that we're going to be sending out requests for bids for replacing the boiler at the courthouse. That is not a budgeted line item in fiscal year twenty fourteen, so I will be coming to you once we get those bids, but it is a very large boiler, and we had hoped that we were going to be able to have a certified welder to weld it back, but pressure vessels for public buildings are not allowed to be repaired due to the extent of the damage this one has. So it's been there since eighty-five, we got pretty good life out of it, and we're going to replace it exactly with that type boiler so that all of the plumbing matches up and all of the ventilation matches up, because it is inside the building, inside mechanical room. Just wanted to let you know that will be forthcoming probably in November. So if you get complaints, a little cool at the courthouse, it's because we're having to replace the boiler. That's all I have.
Okay, this time we'll have a report of Commissioner, Mr. Miller.
Well, that's a good example right there of the courthouse. I know we, we can all sit here and we try to cut budgets, but in my opinion, we need to stop anything that doesn't, is not an emergency to get fixed, or the big paint buildings, anything that's not detrimental to the camp. I don't think we need to spend any money, maybe we need to go back and look, we can make some oil cuts. I'm telling you, this is just one thing, seventy-five thousand dollars, what if an air conditioner goes out at the prison out there? You know, we just, we just need to quit spending money on anything that is not essential to run the camp. Other thing, of course, I had the radio, eight hundred megahertz, and the city's drug their feet, and they find more ways to get out of paying this thing than we can write a book on it, and I'm glad that y'all are going to meet and go ahead and try to get something done and get the money out of it. Other thing is, I read all these letters from the Sheriff's Department, all these things about our bi-week pay schedule. Tell you what, I was not aware that the time block we had is not going to work with the system we're going to go to. I've been informed that, you know, we got to save you some odd thousand dollar time block, it's not even going to work. Is this right?
The Gori Writing System that was purchased in two thousand ten, yes, sir, that is not, that system is no longer supported by our accounting software and is not one of the vendors that will be utilized, correct?
Yeah. I was not aware of this when I did the bi-week, when we voted on bi-weekly. I, I feel, after reading all those letters, there's a lot of folks that live paycheck to paycheck. If they got car papers that were set up, they can't go back and refinance if they got them in general motors. I mean, they can't even do a house paper now, it's six months. It's a whole different story than it was two years ago. The banks had cut down everything, I mean, cut that thirty-day period off, it takes six months to get a loan at the bank, because I talked to somebody at the bank, unless you've got a lot of money to go in with, you're not going to get a loan. I know I'm wasting my time, but I, I would like to see us go back and look at this bi-week thing again, at least, I mean, we're getting the furlough days, we're changing their pay plan, pay schedule, I just think it's the wrong time to do it, in my opinion.
But now, remember, we took care of one of those tonight with that furlough day, so-
I know, I know.
That will alleviate a lot of angst that folks have about the system, about the check.
If you're still going to do paperwork, you're still going to have to go back to paperwork till we can come up, we don't have seventy-five thousand dollars to spend for a time block help, that would have gone cold. We don't have that many to spend now. So, you know, that's, that's the problem right there, that we can't do it. My opinion, department heads and stuff should know when the people get to work. If they ain't getting to work on time, hey, they need to be rolled up. Somebody needs to do this. I mean, it's left up to them to see that the people get to work on time. And I'm not saying I, you know, that I want to do away with the time, I just think right now, the present time is, is just too hard on employees. That's all I got.
Commissioner Johnson?
I want to try to be quick. I want to say congratulations to the Koalas Club, they've done a great fair so far. If you haven't been out there, they've added a lot, it's really family-oriented, and the corn dogs are superb as ever, so great job. Also want to add a big ad moat to Park and Recs on their light policy, utilization policy that we voted on tonight, that is a money-saving process there in order to curtail the use of light stern practice and not leave them on as long, so try to save money there, so I greatly appreciate all their hard work there. Note to Ricky, the hospital authority requested a demonstration of Milvis Agenda, Bonnie Frognar, the chair, and Yvonne Lighter, to see if they might start using that as well, since most of the members own that. Thank you.
I just have two comments to make. I, I want to, and this is not directed to William or anybody in the finance department, but the reason I wrote it to table the financial policy tonight was because one of the things that I had really hoped that we would do was be to look at some way that we could help bring money back into the community. I was very disappointed when we, you know, basically did our Senior Center and, you know, not really very many people locally were able to make part of that money, and I did not see anything in our-
money, and I did not see anything in our budget, in our finance, um, financial policy that referred to that. We, I think we had talked about, yet, there were some concerns of whether or not, um, there was an issue with federal money, but I, you know, I certainly think that anybody that comes into contract with us should try to subcontract some portion of that business to local people. We need to make sure that this money that we're spending, this taxpayer money, stays, some of it stays in this community by, um, allowing people that work here to be a part of these projects. So, that, that was one of the reasons why I didn't vote for it, I didn't see that. And the other thing that I had a concern with was, one of the goals in the fund balance part of it was that we would, we would, you know, try to achieve eighteen percent of the general fund, put in fund balance, and I just think that's a really, really high number, and without having a strategic financial plan that sets up how we want to get there, I just can't see us picking that number, because it's a number that'll set us up to say, oh, we already know what kind of situation we're in. So, I would like to see something really happen in terms of our strategic financial plan that you talked about, Commissioner Ray, so that we can have something to base some numbers, wrap these numbers on. I mean, if we can only make ten percent to the general fund, that's something that's a goal that's achievable. I don't know that, you know, what that number would actually be, but I just don't, I'm not comfortable with having a number out there in the air. Maybe five years, eighteen percent might be good, but I, in this economy, I don't, I don't think that we're ready for it. And that's, you know, like I said, that, we talked about that before, but, um, rather than sit here and try to hash through all this, I think we need to give our concerns to William, to Jenna, and, um, let them see what we can work out with it and then try to bring it back here. But, um, that's all I have.